I really have two topics that I'd like to talk to you all today. So again, if you ever want to hear anything specifically at the town hall meetings, make sure you let us know. There has been a couple of topics that were actually brought forward for us to discuss on this one, and so I'll touch on one of them in just a second. But the last time that we were in here was talking about, you know, early childhood development center, growth plans, what are we going to do? We're in budget time right now, so it's always good to be talking about, you know, what are we, what are we doing? And so, we are making some pretty aggressive strides to expand right now into Pleasant View. And so, I don't know if you all were in one of those sessions where I talked about it and said, "We're not in the build it and they'll come mentality. We're trying to time everything to be when these communities grow." And so, we know that Pleasant View is going to have the Lowe's Distribution Center. Have you all been out there? I mean, it's, that thing's almost built, it seems like, right? It's coming out of the ground pretty fast. But it doesn't, they don't anticipate it being fully staffed until the year 2020. That's going to be when 600 employees are there. Now, they're going to start staffing it immediately, but they don't think it's going to be fully up and fully staffed until 2020. And so, that would be, everyone's moved there, then you start getting the other businesses that come in to surround those 600 people, plus their, their families. And so, we just want to make sure that we've timed it appropriately. So what we've got is a letter of intent from Vanderbilt to do a joint ventured walk-in clinic urgent care right there at Pleasant View. It's in the same space as Dr. Pennington's office. So we met with Dr. Pennington, and what we're doing is we've got a contract on the property next door, which right now has BJ's Dance Hall and Restaurant deal. So they're going to, the, there's a group that's buying that piece of property, and they're going to level it, and they're going to build a medical office building on that. And so, we're going to let Dr. Pennington design his new office space, and we're going to move him across the parking lot essentially into that. Once he's vacated it, then we're going to do the joint venture deal with Vanderbilt right there. So we'll have a little bit of construction. That specialty clinic will still be there that Dr. Beauchamp is in with, that has medical imaging, but we're going to have to put a door in that hallway so that the walk-in clinic will have access to the x-ray, the CT scanner, and they are asking for additional things to be in that specialty clinic, like ultrasound. So, so we'll be able to have some expansion there and be able to provide better services. And so, what, what we hope to see there is a little bit more of a healthcare hub that gets developed there. So I went and met with the, the city mayor there for Pleasant View and outlined all that. And of course, city officials get excited. They like us. I mean, they, they really, we've got a great reputation there, and so, you know, they, they're really excited when we start talking about, you know, "We're going to come out to your community, we're going to expand our services." Then when you say, "Oh, by the way, we're going to do it with a joint venture with Vanderbilt," then they're like, "Oh, that's," you know, so it just kind of moves it up a notch with them on those things. So, we're excited about that and, and look forward to it. And then ultimately, we, I've got to come up with a strategy of how to tackle White House, and I don't have that strategy yet. It's a booming, growing area, but it just, it's a bedroom community, a lot of, it's a retirement community, but then again, it's a, it's a new homebuyer community. Yet again, it's got a strong existing population that's very loyal to the community. So, it's, it's just kind of difficult to decide exactly what, what to do and how to do it. So, it was interesting, the HCA folks came in and they had the same question. They're like, "So what, what do you do with White House?" I was like, "I don't know, I would have expected you all to know what to do with White House." So that's, that's really what we're doing there, and then of course, continuing maintaining our core mission here, which is, you know, just providing the highest quality, lowest cost care, and making sure that we've got the appropriate amount of primary care physicians and those kind of things. So, that's, that's really the goal. We are, we're continuing our presence in Clarksville, that's working out very well for us. We're going a little bit further and deeper into Clarksville. So we're taking the, the groups that are there, like the orthopedic surgeons, and actually moving their office deeper into the Clarksville area as well, because that, that is working out pretty well. So, so we're going to, we're going to keep with that strategy. That's, that's really what we're doing in terms of a growth model, making sure that we're expanding our services and doing more. But, so, that's, I wanted to really update you on that. To get on the, the topic that's very important that was asked by an employee for me to bring forward and talk about is not as exciting to talk about, but it's really to talk about security. It's to talk about what's been going on as a, as a nation, what's been going on in society, and what are we starting to see matriculate into all businesses, but a lot of healthcare? And to talk about what are we doing to make sure that, that people who are struggling with coping skills, what are we doing to protect our employees? What are we doing to protect our other patients? And are we having a proactive approach to that? I'll be honest, we've had a couple of occurrences here, not necessarily here on campus, but involving clinicians, involving staff, that have, have been threatened by patients, by family members. And sometimes it's just by people that they encountered outside of here, but that know that they work here, right? So, it's a, it's an amazing thing about work, right? It's a consistent schedule. I kind of know where you're going to be just about every single day. And so, as either the world receives better publicity about these events, or we're having a higher occurrence, which is really hard to tell, right? Do we just have better social media, and therefore these, these events are being better publicized, or do we have a higher occurrence? And so, we've really got to look at, at what's going on. And so, within each department, if a department has been impacted by one of these types of things, or if a physician's office has been impacted by one of these types of things, then immediately what we receive back in administration is a request. And the request is, how do we bolster up the security for that particular impacted area? Well, what we are attempting to do is look at our security as a whole, look at what we do in our processes as a whole, and making sure that we protect the campus and these physician offices as a whole, as opposed to just saying, "Well, if this occurred in the ED, well, let's just have, you know, one security guard per employee," and then that's, well, "But that didn't do anything for CCU, that didn't do anything for MS2, that didn't do anything for registration," you know, so really just making sure that we've got everything handled from that standpoint. And so, what we're looking at in, in terms of that is really, first of all, doing a little bit of research, finding out, what do other hospitals do? What do other businesses do? One of the requests that has come to me is to arm the security guards. And so, we had to do a poll, not a poll, but I had to, I reached out to the American Hospital Association and the Tennessee Hospital Association and said, "What other hospital's doing about this?" Well, it's split, 50/50, exactly. It was actually a 42, or a 48/52 split of American hospitals, do they have armed security or not? And typically what you'll see, if they have armed security, is they've contracted it out, which is how we used to have it too, which you would have the sheriff or the police department providing the security to the hospital, and therefore you've got the armed guard just by default with that. But what, what they've seen is, if you think about it, only 50% of the hospitals have armed security, 50% don't. Of the shootings that have occurred inside hospitals, one out of every four shootings inside a hospital was a patient or a visitor taking the gun from the armed security guard and using it on staff. But then think of that, only 50% of the hospitals had an armed guard. So therefore, of the 50%, right? One out of four happened in half those hospitals, and one out of four was a patient or a visitor taking the weapon from the armed security guard. So we kind of had to step back and go, huh, hmm, right? That's a, that's a tough dilemma. And the other is, if you do have armed security, then what you have to do is you have to train the armed security if you bring in police officers, because police officers think in terms of criminals. And it's just, right? I mean, "You're a bad guy, I'm here to arrest you," kind of mentality. In healthcare, we have to be careful, because those patients are being brought to us for help. So they're not a criminal, they're a patient. And so, we have to treat them as a patient. And so, you have to put your security through special training about de-escalation, non-lethal tactics, making sure that you understand that these patients are here for help, not to ultimately be incarcerated, right? And so, that's a different mentality. So we're looking at all that to see, okay, what is the right mix for actual security people here? Now, what we've done though, and, and the security department's done a great job, is we're not limiting any resources around security. We're making sure that we've got the right ratios in place, and we maintain those, and they don't really have the same restrictions that some of the departments do. I'm not calling the security department and going, "Hey, you ran up a bunch of overtime yesterday." That's, that's not, no. You bring the staff in that you need, you bring the resources in that you need, you move the people up from part-time to full-time, you do what you've got to do to make sure that we're, that we're covered. But then the other thing that we're looking at is how to better secure the entire campus. Because when you see events that, that are really troublesome, it's typically outside the normal workday, right? Eight to five, there's a ton of people here. But you get outside of that, right? And it's usually just clinical staff and those who are direct patient-facing, and then the weekends. And so, that's when really looking to, how do we maintain the right access to the building? How can we keep all the other doors locked? How can we force everybody to go through maybe the emergency department, right? Well, if you're going to do that, then you're, you better make sure that your focal point of entry is secure, and so everyone has the right, the right resources there. So, what I don't want you all to think is that we have our head in the sand and we're not doing anything. We're really trying to evaluate it. There's not a great answer for any of these, because I'll tell you what, as soon as they tell you, "Well, have a focal point," well, what you've got to do is, one, secure your focal point, but the other is, you don't want to create a sense of entrapment on the person who's come in to do harm. You want them to be able to leave the building, get away, right? It's a fight or flight response. So, there's a lot of nuances, and there's no great answer to any of it, but we're in an odd time in society. Again, not sure if it's because it's more publicized, or not sure if it's just because that's just the way things are going, and we're seeing a higher level of behavioral health patients that are being brought in. And so, as we see this huge upsurgeance of behavioral health and, and a recognition of that, and them coming in for help, we've got to make sure that we protect our staff, protect our other patients, protect the patient who's being brought in for help, but also make sure that we've got all the right mechanisms in place. And so, there will be a few departments, I'm sure, that are going, "Oh, you're not focusing on me entirely." It's true, we're trying to protect everybody. And, and so, you're going to start seeing some changes, some protocols. Some things are policies that we already have in place, but you're going to see a stronger enforcement of them. The visitor-at-night check-in policy, right? I mean, those things, they just, they've just got to be strongly enforced. So, it's an inconvenience to some patients and visitors, or some visitors and guests that come in, but it's just, it's the nature of the beast, and it's kind of where we are. So, that was something that was, that was asked to be addressed, and I know that it may not be the exact answer that some of you are looking for, but we really are evaluating it from all angles, and there's, there's really not a great answer. But, but you will start seeing us take some pretty strong measures to make sure that we've got a secure campus and secure employees. All right? Any questions specifically about that? And of course, we'll open it up for questions at the end. All right, see, that was a good, happy one, wasn't it? Maybe I should, in the next sessions, I'll start with that and end with the growth, right? Will that work? Maybe I should end with a Batman story. All right, well, I will turn it over to Ms. Bridge.
You can hear that all in there.
Well, that's why I buttoned my coat, just to keep all the cord contained.
Any of y'all approaching 50? I realize that my eyesight is stinky, so that even when I eat, I can't quite see my plate anymore. How bad is it that you need readers to see your food? It hasn't stopped me from eating though, obviously. So welcome to the wrap-up of Hospital Week. We thought this would be a fun way to wrap this up. Anybody gotten your present? What do you think? Are any of you like me, Saturday, it's a no-wash hair day, put a hat on, and hope nobody sees you when you're running out with no makeup on? You fellas don't have to worry about it, must be so nice. So Randy talked about we're wrapping up the year, so we're getting our budget completed, and when we do our budget, that also helps us plan our goals for next year. So the financial goals are always pretty easy in a way, because they really tie to our budget. We want to, our goal should be to meet our budget next year, meet our productivity. So our goals for next year are going to be the same that we have this year, and they're all tied to our budget. Y'all gonna love me, because I'm gonna, this is going to be the quickest I've ever spoken. You could say, "Aw, thank you, make me feel a little better." Watch it, or I'll tell you a joke. I have a new one. So, one of the questions that brought forward, and we really, really, really truly appreciate bringing questions to us, because we don't know if we're telling you what you want to hear, is it interesting, is it valuable? One of the questions that came up was kind of a ha for me, that we don't all know this, so I'm glad this person asked this question. This is on the finance side, obviously. Did you know that we give a discount to self-pay patients? All right, good. For those of you that didn't, we give a discount to self-pay patients. Anybody know off the hand what that would be, or how it's valued? 56% is given to a self-pay patient. Do you think that's high, low? How do you feel about that? So off of gross charges, we discount it 56%. Do you know why it's 56? Why it's not 40? Why it's not 80? Why 56? Because you know, if I had a choice, it'd be an even number. Why 56? Do you know the state mandates that? The state tells us how much to discount our self-pay patients. It actually comes from them, because like I said, I choose an even number that I could do in my head. So it comes from the state, rightfully so, we give a discount to self-pay, because we want to treat them as if they have insurance. Your contractual, that, if you have insurance, which all of us do, you see on your EOB, your gross charges, less what? That can, that contract that the insurance company has with the hospital to decrease what you would owe. So I recently had one of the most expensive tests here, guess what that would be? MRI, that's right. So I went back and I was like, "I'm curious, how much do we, does my Aetna discount it?" Guess what? Guess what that discount is? Would you believe that? I was just, things like that just amused me. I was like, "Oh, that is so cool." That's exactly what it was. So that, because I'm a high deductible, so what was remaining is what I owe, which was less 56% of what that gross charge was. Now, self-pay patients, we know, have no insurance, and they typically turn into what? No pay, they turn into bad debt, but they turn also into charity. What's our mission? To provide healthcare to our community. Do we say to only those that can afford us? Do we say to only commercial payers? Are we a for-profit hospital, and John Doe is sending up in New York getting money from us? Where does our money stay? In our community. It is our mission and our vision to also help our community. So realize, as you're comparing maybe what you would get versus what a self-pay would get, that self-pay has no insurance, ever. But that's part of the mission and vision of our hospital. Once you meet your high deductible, your deductible, your high deductible, whichever plan you're on, then you're covered at 100%. Is that self-pay patient ever covered at 100%? Obviously, if they don't pay. They technically are. But we still treat them as a self-pay patient, and what they owe, they owe. Let's look at what the hospital does overall for insurance, because I felt like I also should share this with you, because I don't know that everybody knows this too. How much do you think the hospital covers total as we wrap up all insurance into one bucket? So you know, you pay a premium, we're self-funded, the hospital pays the rest. Anybody know what that percentage discount would be? Do you pay 90 and the hospital pays 10? Do you pay 50, the hospital pays 50? If I have any idea what that would be? Nine? Anyone want to throw one out there for me? All right, fine. It's an 80/20 split. So you pay, when we total up everything at the end of the year, of all monies that have been paid for health insurance, the premiums that are, you pay in cover 20% of the total for all health insurance. The hospital pays 80% of that. Just to kind of give you an ratio. Now, it has varied over the years, so we try to get back to that if it ever falls outside that ratio, which has been, you know, like a 25/75 a few years ago, and we, we said, "No, that's, that's too much. Let's bring back in to the hospital to cover that additional monies." Any questions for me? So enjoy your hat, I hope you enjoyed your slideshow. I had a lot of fun going around taking pictures and pretending like it was Tuesday again. So all y'all that helped me, thank you very much. Enjoy your hat. Turn it over to Ms. Angie Beard.
Once again, I find that I didn't wear pockets to put this in. I don't know how, I always have pockets, except on town hall meetings. Okay, so I wanted to bring you up to date about where we are with our quality, since we're about to finish up the year, as Kim said, we're about to finish up this fiscal year, so I wanted to bring you up to date and catch you up as to where we're at with that. All right? That doesn't work. Okay, let's look at central line days. Remember our goal was to bring down those central line days? That's the, the big IV that we put in somebody's neck, or in their chest, their subclavian, those are those big IVs, and we know that we can get a central line bloodstream infection from them.
Let me help you out.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Anytime.
That's why he's the boss. So that's our central line days, come down very nicely. We had a little increase in last year, and this year, we're right on track, we're doing really well with that. And it's own.
That did something.
I went backwards? We've got it now. Foley catheter days, these are the tubes that we put in someone's bladder. Look how nicely that's come down. Ventilator days, this is how many days our patients are on the ventilator up at CCU. Look how nice that has come down. Isn't that great? So that decreases the chance of getting pneumonia. Surgical site infections, y'all look at that. Three for this year. That's incredible. Out of that three, only one was nationally reported. So only one was reported outside this facility. Look at the hospital acquired MRSA, that methicillin-resistant staff, one. One hospital acquired. This is BRE. Look at that. One. One case. Hospital acquired CDF, remember this is, this is the diarrhea one. We have one. That's great, look, look at that trend. Of course, we're now, we haven't finished out the year yet, we still have to go to June 30th. This is hospital acquired ESBL, we're down to two. We took a little tick up in 2016, and now we're down to two. And then quality, this is actually our catheter-associated urinary tract infections. This is one of those that we take great pride in. We've had a little increase here in three. This team was actually in sustain mode, this CUSP team was in sustain mode, and it has ramped back up and aggressively going after, how come we've had a little increase there, up to three. Clapsee, we were zero for several years, then we had a one in 2016 and one in 2017. That's that central line bloodstream infection. Ventilator-associated pneumonia, look at that, zero. For how many years? Ventilator-associated events, zero. Patient falls, look at that. Down to 22. And then our falls with injury have actually gone up. So our CUSP team is working very diligently to work on those falls with injury. So that means out of the number of falls, we had eight that had injury so far year-to-date, which hasn't down from last year, but it's still not where we want to be. Medication errors, look at that, nice trend of medication errors. And then medication overrides, this is how many times the nurse goes in and overrides a medication that has been ordered but has not been verified by the pharmacy. And then facility-acquired pressure ulcers, this, this is the, we're down to four, from 2016 and 14 down to four. And then restraint usage. We are very diligent about monitoring our restraint usage and what patients are used restraints. Our goal is to have no restraints at all on the floors, the restraints only be used at CCU. And then venous thromboembolism, 100% compliance, we're 100% compliant with doing the recommendations for what we need to do to prevent blood clots in patients. Now, I kind of read through that really fast, because I talk about that every time, and so you all should kind of be familiar with what I talked about as we run through that. At the next town hall meeting, we should have the finalized numbers for the fiscal year, and how that all rolls up into our organizational goals and where we fall out with that. Because I wanted to get to, you know, like, once a year, I want to be a motivational speaker. And it's Hospital Week, so this is my, this is the time I want to be a motivational speaker. So y'all bear with me and let me be a little motivational, y'all act like you're motivated, okay? Give me some positive reinforcement. So, I ask myself, there's four main questions we ask, what, who, why, and where. So when we talk about what, what we are is what we are. So, I'm a nurse, Kathy works in quality, what we are is what we do, right? So what we are can change, but what we are is what we are. Who we are is who we are. I think there was a song about that. No, that's what I am is what I am. But, so who we are is more important than what we are. So I'm just using myself as an example. I may be a nurse, that's what I am, but who I am is Angie Beard. That's who I am. So who I am is more important than what I am. I can change what I am, but I can't change who I am. Right? Can we all agree on that? So why? Why is the question that goes with who I am and what I am? I am a nurse, I am Angie Beard. Why? Why? Oh, I went too far. Why? Why do I do what I do? Is it for love? Is it for money? So why do I, Angie Beard, work here at Northcrest Medical Center? Is it for pride, or money, or love?
For all.
For all. For all. So, some days when you're driving to work, you ask, "Why do I work at Northcrest?" And you have to answer, "Which of these is it? Or is it something different?" Pride equals quality. There's a lot of pride at this hospital, that's how come our quality scores are as high as they are, because pride, we have pride in our work and pride in what we do. And then where? Once again, why do we work at Northcrest? I work at Northcrest because of all those quality scores. This is a good hospital, this is where I want to work. I'm, I am proud when I go out of here, I have pride. I'm proud to wear my name badge, I'm proud to go to meetings in the, in Tennessee and outside of Tennessee, and tell people where I work, we're both regionally, statewide, and nationally known for our safety and for our quality. That's why I work here. I could go somewhere else and I could go somewhere else and make the same amount of money. Probably even more. I could go somewhere else and be Angie Beard. I could go somewhere else and be a nurse. But I can't go anywhere else and have the pride that I have here. Because pride, that's why I wanted to do the quality first, was to show you that all of that is because of Northcrest's pride. Right? Is that motivational, y'all? Now, AOL just came out with a study, this scientific study. AOL did. Y'all can look at this, check this out, I'm serious. I want everybody to look to your left. Look at the person to your left. And look at the person to your right. AOL says, AOL says that researchers say that one out of every three people is ugly. Ugly. If the person to your left is not ugly, and the person to your right is not ugly, what does that mean for you? I'm just saying. So, when I talk about let's look in the mirror, about why, where, and what we do. Maybe we need to look in the mirror for something else. Are you ready?
I'm sorry.
Can we go with the game?
Well, let's ask you if there's any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, it's a little bit less broad-based. One is, it kinda feels like we just had a town hall. I don't know if y'all feel that. But it seems bang-bang. So, what we came in was really, alright, we used some topics that we've been asked to talk about. So, you may feel it was a little bit more pointed today as to particular topics. So, what questions do you have? Anything that you thought you were gonna hear about today that you didn't hear about? Anything you wanna hear about? Anything we've not talked about? You're setting a tone for all the next meetings that are coming up. So, the next group is gonna go, well, why didn't they say talk? I know, we're gonna throw you under the bus, though. Well, first group didn't tell us to talk about that. We are not gonna. All right. What do y'all think about the dress code?
I have a question.
Yeah?
What's going on with the other hospitals?
Oh, Houston County, I mean, that was Broadway.
I don't remember where they were, sorry.
So, you know, there's times to where your fearless leader has to go, we should've never been in Parsons, Tennessee, and Decatur. It was great that hospital needed some help, but dear Lord. There are times to where you all just, you just look at them and go, there's a reason you need help, and we're not here to help you. They were very resistant to change. And so, they're probably gonna close, more than likely. They have actually contacted the Tennessee Hospital Association to determine what does it take to close a hospital. And...
Which one was that?
That was outside of Jackson, Tennessee. About two hours away. Houston County loves us, loves everything that y'all are doing. We still have nurses that are going up there to pull shifts. Angie has actually worked in there as a nurse, pulling some shifts there. So, they're very thankful. We're actually teed up to drop the critical access hospital application to change them from a regular hospital to a critical access hospital, which is, it's a different reimbursement structure. And it'll actually make them a lot more money. And so, that application should be dropped in July. The reason that they're having to wait is because as soon as you drop that application, all your Medicare claims, all your Medicare payments, get pended until they work through the government paperwork to get that done. Well, that can take 60 to 90 days. So, you already have a hospital that's losing $120,000 to $140,000 a month. Now, you take all their Medicare reimbursement, which can be anywhere from $60,000 to $80,000 a month, on top of the loss they already have. And you gotta ask that county, by the way, float that hospital until you can get all those payments. Now, they back-pay you. But can you survive for that three-to-four-month period of time while you're getting sort of your new Medicare number? And so, that's, they're having to wait until July. So, that community is gonna have to take a loan, essentially, to cover the hospital for that period of time. And they can't get a loan, and I'm calling it a loan, but they can't borrow money until July. So, but that'll be, at that point, you should be looking at September, October. They should be reclassified as a critical access hospital. That should put them on the road to safety in terms of remaining open. And we've already begun talking about, okay, you know, what involvement do you want from us after that point? Because we came in to do a job. And that job should have been accomplished by that time. And so, then it's, what do you want? Because we like the clinical partnership. You know, I like knowing that we kept a little hospital open. And we wanna kinda, now we've invested some sweat equity in it. You kinda just, now you've invested in it. You wanna keep it going well and doing well. And I enjoy participating with their board members. Their board members don't like me as much as they like, you know, Rob and Angie and Kim. I'm just the guy that shows up once a month and talks about Washington politics. But they're friendly with everybody else. So, but it's done pretty well.
Have you considered, like, putting a little clinic or anything that are close to that? Orthopedic or anything?
Yes, ma'am. So...
Well, see, I'm 20 minutes from Arizona. So, it's like Angie. It's convenient.
Well, so, what I would like to convince their board and that hospital to do is, okay, the first thing you had to do is become financially viable. So, that should happen, September, October. The next thing is, you should change your reputation. You should be known as being the highest-quality hospital in the state of Tennessee and in the nation. Right? That should be a goal. So, how do you become that place? That trusted caregiver within your community? How are you pursuing? How are you raising the bar? What are you doing there? If they will partner with that? If they agree that yes, they want to pursue that, and they wanna become chest pain accredited, and stroke accredited, and these kinda things, and they wanna begin a quality journey? I would love to partner with them on a quality journey. And at that point, I also would not mind if Northcrest's name was actually associated with Houston County Community Hospital. But I am not going to associate our name, beyond what we're doing right now from a financial standpoint, with an organization if they just go, no, we just wanna stay open. We're just gonna treat the patients that come in the door. Healthcare is healthcare. Then, yeah. But if they're willing to go down a quality journey with me, then yes.
I would think they would, because they used to be that way.
I think they will, too. But they were just so panicked, because how do you keep the lights on?
Really bad management coming in.
They had some bad decisions that occurred.
Yeah, some bad decisions made.
Yes. Yep. So, that would be the nice next iteration, that we're having those conversations. But we'll support them however they would like. Anything else? So, I'd ask, what do y'all think about the dress code? Hadn't affected you? That's funny. It hasn't affected me either. All right. Well, just so you, if you don't know, we're in a 90-day trial of the new dress code. And so, that was, basically, it was management, senior administration, and the employee advisory council all working together to try and come up with one. And really see what changes needed to happen. And how do you modernize the dress code? And, you know, just seeing really what the feedback was. And a lot of times, just so that y'all are aware, what ends up happening is the dress code is actually shaped more by interpersonal relationships between employees and interdepartmental relationships than it really is by the customers that we serve. We're finding out that patients really don't care. They just wanna be treated with care and compassion, and don't hurt me. And I could care less if you're in blue jean scrubs, if you're wearing a white uniform, a lab coat, or whatever. They do appreciate if you introduce yourself when you come in the room. And by the way, they don't drive their decisions as to what you are by the scrub color. Departments compare, are very, very concerned about other department scrub colors. Patients don't care. They just want you to walk in the door, tell them what department you're with and who you are. Tell them your name, and don't hurt them. That's pretty much it.
I find patients just want to know who wears what. They don't know, they don't get it. They're like, what department was this?
Right.
They always ask. And they're all cheat-cheat in there.
A cheat-cheat.